City of Northland Channel 8, keeping you informed of events in your community.
You liked that, didn't you Cory?
Jason.
All right, we're gonna get on. Mrs. Brown.
I'm watching our attorney turn red and laugh.
Look at him. It's like not stopping. All right, I am now calling the city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snitzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Mollica.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escabal.
Here.
Thank you, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, are there any agenda deletions or additions from council? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. Whereas mentors support our next generation to shape their ambitions, set a positive course, and achieve their boundless potential. During National Mentoring Month, we celebrate everyone who teaches, inspires and guides our children and young people as they reach for their potential. And whereas mentors offer valuable encouragement, motivation, and hope for our children and youth by providing a consistent adult friend and role model. And whereas relationships with caring mentors offer children and youth valuable support to guide them toward making positive, healthy choices. And whereas research has shown mentored youth are less likely to skip school, start using drugs and alcohol, or engage in violence, and are more likely to attend college. Mentored children and youth also exhibit improved self-esteem, better relationships, and feel greater connectedness to their communities, schools, and schools. And whereas partnerships between businesses, schools, and other youth service organizations and mentoring programs are in effect way for businesses to support children and youth within the community. And whereas collaborative mentoring programs that are supported by the entire community are more visible and therefore able to serve more children and youth. And whereas our public and private organizations through the community are committed to working collaboratively to increase the number of quality mentoring matches. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim January 2016 as Mentoring Awareness Month in the City of Northland and commit to supporting more children and young people to have access to a quality mentor in our community. Dated at Northland, Colorado this 11th day of January 2016. Okay. Next, we have presentations and Debbie, are you ready for economic development?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'll keep this short. Just wanted to congratulate again Northland for their ninth annual Count the Lights contest. Our second place winner was a Northland youth. Each year we find different ways to increase the visibility on that and also change some things up around there, so we're looking forward to our 10th one next year. Ribbon cutting, last in December, we had Glamour Hair Salon and Scissor Hands Design Studio. We also had our first holiday after-hours networking event at Bearby Design. One of the things the companies and businesses have told us is that they want more networking opportunities to meet other Northland companies. It was very successful, we had over 30 companies there. So, we plan on doing that again this year. We will be refining the year-end numbers and we'll have a final report to council in February. These numbers need to be, there's some new companies that moved in in December that business licenses didn't quite get in for these numbers, but we'll be reporting that. But the preliminary numbers are that we have 52 new companies, reporting 683 new employees, and absorbing 244,843 square feet of space. Celebrating Northland business anniversaries, the businesses celebrating their anniversaries is in your report, it's great to see 40 years of doing business in Northland, O'Meara Ford and Goodyear, that's quite an accomplishment. And then also just a quick update on NERA, we did adopt our budgets for NERA, those are gonna be on the website this week, so feel free to call me if you have any questions on that. But other than that, if you have any questions for me tonight?
Questions?
Debbie, I see that you have the Asian buffet listed as a new storefront business?
Sure.
And we don't have the corresponding whoever was there previously as a closed business?
Oh.
So, I think sometimes in our numbers, I'm concerned about some of our numbers because that certainly has been called Asian buffet for years.
It's City Buffet before.
Okay, well, so I just think that we need to be clear that we know that that's not a brand-new location in our city or anything like that, so it's really a replacement business.
Right.
So, I just, I noticed that in particular this month.
That's true.
But they weren't, that they weren't as part of our closed business.
Right, City Buffet closed, and new owners purchased that, built that, and took, did a new lease. And so the way that we announce these is if it's a new owner and a new name, it's considered a new business. However, in the reports on a quarterly basis, I do give council the closed businesses, so that's your net businesses, so you'll have that next month, that's a report that I'll be giving you. So again, these are the ones that are reported, but we do have businesses that close. And so this is the net new jobs, net new square footage, because people do absorb space and move, new companies move in. Is that, that help for clarification purposes?
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Thank you Debbie.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public invited, be heard, five minutes per speaker. Statements shall be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Adolfo, I think that's you. Would you please state your name and sign in for us?
My name is Adolfo Aranda, and I am representing my family. I'm also representing the American Legions. My family was awarded from, to the, from the American Legion for Family Service, and we're having a celebration, full color guard caps and representation from the mayor for proclamation, and I have the flyers here. It's for my, for all my brothers and my family members. One of them, I'll tell you a little bit about him, one of them was Huaiga Aranda, he was a Vietnam War vet, and his brother was also a Vietnam War vet, two of my brothers. Another one was Huaia Aranda, 35 years of military police, Bronzal, Bronz Stark. Shannon Aranda, a Master Sergeant Military Intelligence Battalion. And Dominic Aguilar, Air Force active, 80 seconds airport squadron. So, I'm inviting all of you guys, it'll be honored for you guys to be there. I got flyers here.
Can you tell the council when and where?
This is January 16th at 3 o'clock at the American Legion Post 22 here in Northland.
Thank you.
So, can I leave these here?
Absolutely, you can. And then the city is going to have a proclamation for the family also, yes.
Thank you very much, we'll see you guys there.
Okay, thank you for coming and congratulations to your family. Thank you. All right, next we have, is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, then we'll move to the financial report. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is the November 2015 monthly financial report. As always, I'll start off with an overview of sales and use tax, a year-to-date. Has reported an increase of near $1.7 million or approximately 11%. Within that number, sales tax specifically is up 9.6%. Use tax, 14%. Auto use tax is up 20%. Food tax is up 32%, and accommodations tax is up 4%. So all of our major areas are showing significant increases year-over-year, as I've been reporting for the prior 10 months. So, continuing to see positive things on the sales and use tax side of things. Start off with the general fund. Year-to-date revenues within the fund are at $22.2 million. That's a 14% increase, or $2.6 million more than in the prior year. The operating revenues in the fund are up 5%. On the general fund expenditures, those total $19.9 million, accounting for 85% of the annual appropriation, and we're 92% of the way through the year. So we might see some savings as compared to budget, just because we're a little bit behind on total spending. And we probably won't quite get to 100%, but we strive to be within 2% to 3%. That's our goal of what we project in budget for revenues and expenditures. That's how we decided we're doing a good job in sticking to the plan. So, we'll monitor that and update you at year-end. In the water and wastewater funds, year-to-date revenues are at $12.3 million. This is an increase of about 12% to the prior year. Water resource revenues are at $217,000, which is an 11% increase over the prior year. And then restricted revenue, which is our food tax, as I mentioned, is up 32% or $189,000 for the year. Then on the expenditure side, water and wastewater fund expenditures are just over $12 million. That accounts for 52% of the annual appropriation. And as we talked about often, those numbers are impacted by large capital projects that are ongoing, that we'll see carry over to the next year. So although we're at 52% on operating, and the total budget, the operating budget is a lot closer to the total appropriation. It's just those large capital projects that make it look that we're 50% spent, but we'll, we'll get there with these big projects. In the stormwater funds, year-to-date revenues are at $358,000. Those remain relatively unchanged over the prior year as we'd expect. And then total expenditures in the stormwater fund are $136,000, which are about 42% of the annual appropriation. At Grange Hall Creek, IGA was entered into this year, which was about $48,000 or $49,000, which explains the increase in expenditures over the prior year of about $56,000. It was one particular agreement for a study for Grange Hall Creek is why those expenditures increased quite a bit. And then in the sanitation funds, year-to-date revenues are $1.2 million. This is a decrease of about 13%. We've talked about the different impacts of recycling before. And then year-to-date expenditures are just over $1 million and account for 57%. There's a budget line item for capital purchases of trucks in the sanitation fund. I just double-checked today, we received those trucks just at the end of the year, so we'll see those expenditures in December or at year-end when we make the accrual. So there's a, a large discrepancy between the budget versus what we spent so far through November, and it's just we took possession of the trucks, you know, at the end of December, so we will, we will catch up. I was wondering why we hadn't been spending money, but it was just the delivery of the truck timing will be in December, and we'll see that at year-end. Last couple of things that I'll point out. Cash reserves, so this is what we have invested or in the bank, at the end of November are $51.7 million as compared to $49.6 in the prior year. And then on page 10 of the report, you'll see the sales and use tax collected by area. All of the areas, again, through November showing positive signs. Washington Point is still down slightly, but overall, the city's financial shape is very positive. So, that I can ask, I can ask some more questions, or I could answer any questions that you guys might have, whichever way you guys want to go.
Are there any questions for Jason?
All right.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Jason. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Please open the vote.
The vote is open, please vote. I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Next, we'll move to public hearings. Joanna, CB 1859.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code concerning backflow prevention in the city's water distribution system.
I'll now open the public hearing on CB 1859. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1859? Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1859? I will close that public hearing, and we'll move to CB 1863.
A bill for a special ordinance rezoning from C4 commercial restricted service with conditions to C4 commercial restricted service. Certain real property in the City of Northland located at 550 West 104th Avenue, City of Northland, County of Adams, State of Colorado, amending the zoning map of the City of Northland and imposing penalties for violations of the ordinance.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on the application for the rezoning of the property located at 550 West 104th Avenue, Belco Credit Union property, from C-4 commercial with conditions to C-4 commercial. The Northland City Council has jurisdiction to conduct this hearing under the applicable provisions of its Home Rule Charter and charters 3 and 11 of the Northland Municipal Code. The procedure to be followed in this case will be as follows. City staff will give a brief outline of the nature of the application. The applicant may then present any evidence in support of the application. All persons opposed to the application shall then be entitled to present evidence. Any other interested persons shall be entitled to present public comment or evidence. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. Councilmembers may ask questions of the staff, the applicant, and the public who testify. All witnesses will be placed under oath by the city clerk and may be cross-examined by any party, council, or any party or the members of city council. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the city council or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Seeing none, Cory or David?
I think it's Nancy Brooke.
Okay, all right, I called the wrong person. Brooke?
Isn't it interesting how they pass that on so quickly?
I know, I know, it was pretty interesting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brooks Favoda, City Planning Director. Thank you. Tonight, I just, I will give a very brief presentation on this, and then the applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have. As was currently earlier recited, this is 550 West 104th Avenue, the old Belco Credit Union, which was previously had a conditional zoning, and what we're here tonight to consider, and only tonight, is to remove the conditional zoning and establish regular C4 zoning. One of the things I want to point out relative to this request is simply that C4 zoning has a broad list of uses, which essentially includes almost every commercial use that we have identified in our current zoning ordinance. But one thing I want to point out is that because this property is only three-quarters of an acre, it's going to be essentially site-constrained to some of those uses, and predominantly what we're going to potentially see here are neighborhood uses. Neighborhood type of commercial uses, i.e. retail store, or food service, or something like that. We're not necessarily going to see a 65-foot-tall office tower on this property because you physically could not accommodate the off-street parking and the other infrastructure needs that would otherwise be associated with that. Having said that, also want to point out that within our provisions, we also have measures in our current policy that if in fact we identify something to be a substantial change, that it would otherwise require another public entitlement, i.e. final development plan. Currently, there is an identified end-user for the property, however, it's not, it's not for public disclosure at this time. We've been working with the applicant on what that potential end-user may be, and as of right now, we don't believe that it will require a future entitlement and that it would basically work as a use by right under our current zoning regulations. With that, I'd also point out that this was, a public hearing was also held before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended approval, and in your staff, in the staff report, you will also see the approval criteria, which are also part of the ordinance. So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Are there any questions for Brooke? No? All right, then, thanks Brooke.
Thank you.
We may be asking you though. You never know. Okay. I guess who will be testifying tonight? As how many people are, who will be testifying concerning this public hearing? Anyone?
Mayor, I think the applicant's here to answer questions, but...
But not to testify?
Correct.
All right, because I was just asking, because if you do testify, then we have to swear you in. So, all right. So, the applicant is here, would you come forward and, or just...
Hello, Mayor and Council, Tyler Carlson. I am the applicant on this zoning request. I, my company is under contract to acquire the property from Belco, who is the former occupant, the current owner. As you guys are probably well aware, they relocated their operations to the other side of the highway, no longer had a need for the property and put it on the market last year, and it was, became pretty apparent to them and to other interested parties that the zoning was a major issue. If you read the current restrictions, it really limits the property to just a bank, and that's about it. And so, my intended use is neighborhood in nature. It is something that we think will be very in keeping with the corridor and certainly not obnoxious in any stretch, and we, but an important part of that is being able to reuse the drive, the drive-through facilities on the property, and I think that's where the challenge we got into with staff, because C4 is the only zoning code that allows you to basically continue to use the drive-through. So, that's really the plan, and appreciate all of your time tonight, and enjoying working with staff closely on getting the development right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good to see you. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. I know that you're not in a position right now to stay with the end uses, and I appreciate you talking about that you're going to utilize the drive-through. Has there been any analysis on traffic and the impacts that that's going to have on the surrounding community, you know?
It's a, it's a very timely question, Kyle, because staff was just asking me this morning, that's part of our process, before they'll issue a building permit for us to remodel the property, we are going to have to provide a traffic analysis that talks about, you know, stacking in the drive-through lane and where the traffic is coming from. I can't tell you, we're intending to preserve the current access points, well, the one on 104th, and then at public works request, we will be, I think, closing the northern driveway on Melody, there's two right now, and the northern driveway is very close to the 104th intersection, so we will be closing that northern one, consolidating, but it'll just be one driveway on Melody, one driveway on 104th, and no access to the residential neighborhood to this, to the rear. And we are also planning on keeping all the mature vegetation that's there, it's a great, you know, visual screen and also sound screen, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You tricked us with the name. I'm like, I don't know who Fire Tree is.
Oh, Fire Tree, yeah.
I'm like, I think that's, I'm not sure though.
You gotta keep it exciting, you know?
I know, huh? I'm glad to hear, I was going to ask about the vegetation, so that's good to know.
Yeah, absolutely, it's been an important part.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Is there anyone else either, that would like to speak either for or against? All right then, with that, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to, I'm looking here, ordinance's second reading, CB 1859.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Municipal Code concerning backflow prevention in the city's water distribution system. Move to approve. Second.
Okay. David?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Backflow Prevention and Cross-Connection Control Program really is initiated from CDPHNE Additional Rules, it's called Backflow Prevention Rule. It applies to commercial, industrial, and multifamilies, and it gives the city more, I guess, leverage in just assuring that typical building codes include pressure differential devices, that's basically a backflow preventer prevents, keeps the water going one way from the city main to the service delivery area and not the other way around. And it's, it's critical to keep our water, our water system clean and fresh and not to have contaminants come through if they exist in the, in the private side. So, that, this ordinance is basically, is an ordinance change that goes into the municipal code.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open, please vote. I'll close that vote, and CB 1859 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB 1863.
A bill for a special ordinance rezoning from C4 commercial restricted service with conditions to C4 commercial restricted service. Certain real property in the City of Northland located at 550 West 104th Avenue, City of Northland, County of Adams, State of Colorado, amending the zoning map of the City of Northland and imposing penalties for violations of the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mayor and Council, we just heard from Brooks' presentation, this ordinance, if it approves, will change the current Belco zoning to a more traditional C4 zoning.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but just a comment, I'm glad to see one of the properties over and worked for that's been vacant for a little while being reutilized, so, thanks Tyler, and thanks to staff for working through this rezoning for us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please open the vote.
The vote is open, please vote. I'll close that vote, and CB 1863 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is resolutions, the first one is CR2.
A resolution approving addendum number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Northland and RSM US LLP, formerly McGladrey LLP, for audit services. Move to approve. Second.
Mayor and Council, the original RFP for audit services contemplated a three-year total contracting period, the first year and two additional years. The termination language in the original agreement unfortunately, or inadvertently, did not address that, so with your approval tonight, it'll prove audit, audit services through December 2016, provided we have good service, of course.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open, please vote. I'll close that vote, and CR2 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR3.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to issue purchase orders to Siltar Heart Motors Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $112,835 for the purchase of city vehicles.
Move to approve.
Mayor and Council members, a congratulation to the chief for getting the first one to the table for his replacement vehicles here. Anyway, the three, the three police interceptors are the fully four-wheel-drive, fully loaded or wired for police service, and the one Ford Explorer is a two-wheel drive, doesn't have those police accessories for investigation services. And both, all four of these are in the replacement schedule.
Thank you. Yes?
The one issue I have is, is I know that last year when we were making a lot of the vehicle purchases, we had offered a directive to go to O'Meara and at least give them the opportunity to submit a bid. Was that done this time, do noted?
I do not know, Kyle.
Chief?
I'm sure the chief has the answer for that one.
I had the same concern, so, it's not just Kyle picking.
I think O'Meara has the opportunity to bid off the state bid, and they didn't get it this year. There's some offline things I can talk about going directly to O'Meara this year on our behalf, incident that happened, but...
behalf, incident that happened, but we did not do that. We felt, you know, that was, you know, the state bid was the, the bid. And I, I think we need, I remember this conversation of you guys saying to go to O'Meara. I think what happened was that also is the clarification, because, and I'll take that as my bad on that one, not to actually go, but there's other reasons. This came up probably a week after we decided to go with the Siltuhar thing that they came back up that we should have came, or went to O'Meara, but there's incidents that happened that I can talk about that offline, though.
Okay. And maybe that can go through Cory, or, or is there something that-
I can, I can update council for sure.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure, maybe is there something that, and maybe Cory, you can answer this, is there, because, because if I remember correctly, the whole reason was is to at least give our local businesses-
Right.
-the opportunity to bid on something, and if it's not lower, that's fine, but at least give them the opportunity. Is there something formal, like a resolution, that we need to, to do to maybe make this part of the protocol when we're-
I, I think at the time we talked about this, and the concern is that you are going through a formal bid procedure-
Mm-hmm.
-and then telling those that are successful that they may not be successful, because then you're going to take their bid and shop it to a local business. So, I think there is an-
But, but what we, we went through that, and, and we were, we, it came to the conclusion that we are allowed to do that. Just because we're going through the state bid doesn't mean that we can't still give a local business the opportunity to do it.
And, and so I think the discussion was that if you formalized that policy, there was some risk on the city's side, whereas if you went to this, you could still shop it if you chose to, to see if they could do better. I'm happy to put that into legislation. It may hurt your ability to bid, but we can certainly look at that.
And maybe we need more conversation about the pros and cons of this.
Well, I think that we have something on the books already where we give preference to local-
We do.
We do. The difference is that's as part of the bidding procedure.
Right.
What you're contemplating here is having it, accepting a bid essentially through your cooperative governmental purchasing, so you are accepting the state bid, and then taking that bid and shopping it, as opposed to having the preference as part of the initial bid process.
I guess for me, what I envision is we do the state process and we go to O'Meara and say, hey, we're shopping this, we're, we're, have this bid package out, we would like to see if you would bid it, not taking a bid that we receive and taking it to them and saying, hey, can you beat this?
Okay, that's different than what was discussed previously.
Well, the number, the number's public record, too. I mean, it's not, I mean, the bids that they're putting out, the Siltuhar, whoever's bid, I mean, that's all public record, so.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's not like it's secret.
Yeah, and, and I just want to point out that O'Meara Ford has the ability to, to put prices in on the state bid. I mean, one of the things for staff is the state bid is, can be quite detailed. You've got a base unit for your car, and you've got all these accessories, and how staff does it, they'll go through and check the accessories off. O'Meara Ford certainly has the ability to bid those state bids, and if we go into the bid process like Cory was talking about, pick out all these items, then essentially bring the paper and ask O'Meara Ford to, to bid again, or to bid separately on those, it, it's going to be, it can be quite time-consuming. I just want council to know that.
Well, I, I, you know, we need to go off of another example that we have that we went through the state bid was the, the van. I mean, that, that obviously didn't work out, too. And so, I, personally, I know that when we talked about this last year, I just, I would, I would prefer at least giving a local company the opportunity to say, we're, we're going to be making this purchase, are you interested even in submitting so?
And I just want, the reason the van didn't work out is because of timing. You know, you go to the state bid, and everybody gets in the door first. When you get down at the end of the year, you're not going to get that year's model on the state bid, and that's what happened with the van, and I think that happened to one of our engineering vehicles, where you had to go to the next year's bid, actually, to get last year's vehicle if we're not timely in getting these requests out early in the season.
I think what I'm hearing, though, is whatever business it is, just to make them aware that we're going out to bid, not to make any special attempt, but just make them aware that we're looking for an item, or whatever it is, and they have the option at that point to be part of that.
Certainly for a Ford, I mean, they're obviously-
For whatever it might be, you know, so, okay. Is that pretty much what you're, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, is there any, any other discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR3 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR4.
A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Northland and the Adams County Board of County Commissioners for Animal Shelter Adoption Center Services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mayor, Council members, this is our annual IGA with Adams County Animal Shelter that basically provides, allows for housing adoption, quarantine, and other services. This year, a few of the fees have increased. Impound fee and boarding fee have gone up from 106 to 150, and seven dollars, ten dollars, respectively. However, there's a few additional services they now provide, now are providing, they're in your memo there. If fees, all fees can be waived if the stray is reclaimed by its owner as the first one and receive, if the, the shelter receives restitution, the city can get credit back for that. And then lastly, the shelter has, no longer has the option to bill the city for veterinary care costs.
Thank you. Discussion?
I have a question. So, this is to take place 2/1/16 to 12/31/16? What are we doing for January?
Jim? What happened, not all the municipalities were able to get their information in and all that and the feedback, so they had to delay it a month, so we're going over last year's contracts for this month. So, we're just going to carry it on for the month of January, and then February we'll switch over. I think some of the benefits compared to last year, we are going to that new pay schedule. That's why you saw an increase in the animal shelter this year. However, there are some pluses that came out of that animal shelter IGA this year, and that was, the fact before, we were charged for the animals when we took them up there, and when people would pick their animals up, they would also pay the fine, but they never credited that money back to us. In this contract, they'll credit that money back to us, so I'm hoping, you know, the budgeted that we have for this year, they won't actually meet that. We'll end up getting, you know, kind of like refunds of the actual charges that we will have. So, I think it's going to work out in our benefit with the new contract, so, but they had to delay it till February.
Thank you. Discussion? Any more discussion, questions? Thank you, Jim. Please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR4 passes unanimously.
Next, CR5.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement for the city of Northland, between the city of Northland and Allied Waste Systems of Colorado LLC for calendar year 2016 landfill services.
Move to approve?
Second.
David?
Mayor, Council members, this is the first of four annual contracts. This is our solid waste annual contract to Allied Waste Systems of Colorado. The landfill that we use is over on Tower Road, and the fees are projected to have no increase at $11 per ton.
Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR5 passes unanimously.
Next is CR6.
A resolution approving a service agreement between the city of Northland and Waste Management of Colorado Incorporated for calendar year 2016 single-stream recycling services.
Second.
David?
Mayor, Council members, this is the flip side to the solid waste. This is our recycling contract. If you note, there's, there's no price per ton here. Several years ago, as commodity prices started varying quite dramatically, they went to a variable rate. This, the service that, that Waste Management provides is located just north of I-70, I think, off of, just off of Colorado Boulevard, I believe. Anyway, want to point out that in 2014, we, we were averaging 131 tons, and last year we were, we were up to 148 tons per month.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
So, I just want to remind residents that if you don't have a recycle cart, you can call in and get one, and if you're interested in having a second recycle cart, you can call in and we can switch out a lid for you, so, it's a great program.
Right, good point. Any other discussion or comments? Please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR6 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR7.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and Ramey Environmental Compliance Incorporated for 2016 lift station maintenance services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mayor, Council members, this is the second year we've used the lift station maintenance contract, and the second year the Ramey Environmental has won that, that service. We have 10 lift stations in the city. The two big ones are Lift Station A and B, and then we have eight smaller lift stations that require bi-weekly and some monthly basis maintenance on them to look at pumps and, and their gauges, things like that. This is a supplemental service to, to complement staff's effort, and again, the second year, and we're proposing a reward to Ramey Environmental Compliance for $44,642.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR7 passes unanimously.
Next is CR8.
A resolution approving an agreement between the city of Northland and Sturgeon Electric Company Incorporated for traffic signal maintenance.
Move to approve?
Second.
Again, this is another annual contract. You may note, the WL contractors usually won this. This year, they chose not to bid. We have 38 traffic signals, soon to be 39 and 40 with Grant Street, and then the, the light potentially at the police station, 22 school zone flashers, and this year, Sturgeon Electric was the only bid we got on this job, and, and they basically provide service to our, to our traffic signals and school flashes throughout the school year, throughout the year.
Discussion? Yes?
Do we know why the other, the other companies didn't bid? Did they give us a reason why they didn't?
Right now WL is very, they, no specific reasons is the short answer.
Okay. And how does this price compare to previous years, and how much do we actually have budgeted in the general fund? I know it says it's coming out, is it under budget from what we ran?
This is over the appropriation amount. Last year was 75,000.
That's what I thought, so I just wanted to double-check that, so. It's unfortunate, but nothing you can do when people don't bid. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. Close-up vote and CR8 passes unanimously.
Next is CR9.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated for the Carls Farm Dairy Utility and Drainage Master Plan.
Move to approve?
Second.
David?
Mayor, Council, this is a professional engineering firm that will be providing a master utility study and drainage study, and some onsite infrastructure and cost analysis for the, the master plan of Carls Dairy. The firm will also be looking at potentially what improvements will be needed off-site, namely in utility and drainage as well, and costing those as well, for the, to go in conjunction with the master plan of Carls Dairy.
Thank you. Questions?
Sorry. What was the process used to select this organization, this company?
It was, it was a selected source. The firm that was, was selected was part of the, basically, development team that came in and met with city staff, and that was, been working with us all along.
I, I don't like that at all, but thank you for the information.
Any other discussion or questions? Yes?
I couldn't find in the agreement, it could be there, and I just didn't see it, or the exhibit a deliverable date for the complete study, the completed study?
Yeah, it's going to be fairly quickly. We, we promised the, the broker that's working with the Carls Dairy family, we'd have this by the end of March.
So, I would assume that this kind of study is normal when you're doing city-owned land, working on city-owned land? So, this land isn't owned by the city. Is it still normal that the city puts money into that study and not the person that owns the land?
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think the nominal value, and I don't mean to diminish 39,000, is, is not a, a significant amount of money, but the fact that compared to the infrastructure requirements and having the knowledge, basically, the, the city staff having the knowledge of exactly, you know, what size infrastructure, what that cost is, and probably even more importantly, you know, we did, you know, in anticipation of this broken eye, did 120th conceptual design study, which came up with estimated size of the road and what those costs were, on that same line of thinking, this is going to do, do a research and analysis of the off-site utilities to, to be able to tell us if, for instance, a bunkerhead lift station can take the loading from 66 acres of development. Where, where does the storm drainage go? I mean, those are things that are going to be very crucial, and the council and the potential buyer of that property will want to know who's paying for what and how much that's going to cost. And so, I, I will point out that this study is not making any assignments of cost, they're only trying to identify what those costs are.
Okay.
And for the, for our public who may not have access to this, are they going to give us several different ways to estimate that cost at a later point? Because right now, we don't have a development plan, so how are they going to know how much sewer or water is needed when we don't even have a development plan? So, how does that fit in?
Well, staff is working on a, a concept development plan, and whether council changes that a little bit or a lot. The basic principle is of how much infrastructure costs per acre, depending on what type of acre, residential, commercial, is pretty much, it's pretty much modeled, so you can determine what that cost is. It's, it's, it'll get us a very good approximation of what's going to happen onsite, but I think more importantly, it gives us a handle of what we need to do on the off-site infrastructure to be able to support that. That, that's probably the, the main goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. I'll close the vote and CR9 passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snatzinger.
Thank you. Next is CR10.
A resolution approving agreements between the city of Northland and American West Construction LLC and the city of Northland and Sea &amp; Water Solutions Incorporated for emergency pipeline repairs.
Move to approve?
Second.
David?
Mayor, Council member, these two contractors may seem familiar to, to you. If they are, they're the contractors we've been using for the last several years. Both have provided exemplary service for us. This was put out on the street again in November, and I think, I think we went through our three-year bid period, and both, both of these firms have, have won the, the reassignment, and these are agreed-upon contracted prices, so if we have to call them an emergency, we have agreed-upon prices, and also, if, if by chance we are able to get FEMA reimbursements on disasters and things like that, we have the prices here in the contract. So, again, the two emergency contractors for 2016.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open, please vote. I'll close that vote and CR10 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, we'll move to questions, and we'll start with-
Starting, starting at this end.
I'm going to start.
I, I really don't have anything to report. The wonderful holidays, I trust everybody here enjoyed their holidays as much as I did, anxious to get back to work. Thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Okay, so, Ward 1, Jordan and I are going to host our ward meeting. It will be on January 21st from 6:30 to 8:00, so please join us so we can discuss some city business. We'll have a lot of staff there to help us out and bring forward any concerns that you may have going on in the city. The second thing I wanted to mention is that the a cappella series kicks off on Friday, January 15th at 7:30 in the Parsons Theater. It will be the 17th Avenue All-Stars, and the little blurb about them says they're one of Denver's top a cappella acts, so it should be good. Like I keep saying every time I talk about it, I think that they're amazing shows, so please attend, they're really fun. It's $10, eight for youth and seniors. And that is it for me.
Okay. The only thing that I will mention is today, we did hold coffee with the mayor, and normally we hold it at the Atlanta Bread Company. This time, as a special treat, the Northland High School hosted us, and it was very nice. They had the culinary class come in, and they served us a breakfast, and then the superintendent came in and talked about the school district and what was going on with the school district, and all about the different things. So, I just wanted to thank the school and Northland High School for doing that. That was very nice. Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say what Carol says, we hope to see you next week, and go Broncos.
You know what? We didn't say that, it's at Leroy Drive Elementary School. That's where we're having it, I'm sorry. Thought maybe you would, you would pick that up.
Carol, what about the gold papers?
That's not welcome here, so I don't do that, okay?
We had, some of the council attended, we had a meeting with our legislators a couple days, a couple nights ago, and I thought that went really well, and that we were able to let our voices be heard on some issues, and so, us, wanted to encourage us to continue to do that, encourage the community to have their voices be heard as well when it comes to, to issues that are going to be affecting us down at the Capitol, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing, thank you.
Joanna?
Nothing to nightmare.
David?
Nothing to nightmare.
And I think I've talked enough.
We didn't want to say that. Thank you.
We did vote though, the vote is open.
All right, next on the agenda is public invited, be heard, three minutes per speaker and I see we do have audience here. Did anyone want to speak to us? No? No one wants to speak to council? Nope? All right then, okay. With that, we're going to adjourn and move into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5 Perrin B of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter. For the review of applications for any appointed position, interviews and appointments shall be conducted at an open meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Please open the vote. Vote is open, please vote.
We'll close that vote and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.